To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, welcome to the Monday, November 7th, 2022 Board of Alderman meeting. Tonight, we are going to start with a motion to approve minutes from the previous meetings.
So moved.
We have a second. Any discussion, questions, comments, changes? Hearing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good, okay, moving on to outside the rail. We're going to start off tonight with Thomas Kessup Jr., effects of water main break on Granger Street, and there is paperwork in your packet for this, pages one through five in your packet. TJ, you want to come up?
Good evening to the Board of Alderman and Mayor O'Leary. My name is Thomas Kessup Jr. of Granger Street, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before the Board this evening. On October 19th, 2022, at approximately 4:30 a.m., the city experienced a water main break on the northern end on the west side of Granger Street. The main break was shut down at 6:30 a.m. The pipe that was ruptured was installed in 1932. The break released approximately 600,000 gallons of water, which was then released into the street. Water flooded the yard and basement of my home. This resulted in approximately $25,000 worth of damage. Damage included yard flooding resulting in a sinkhole, damage to furnace, oil tank, electrical, electrical panel, hot water heater, and basement flooding, the height of which reached four feet, six inches. Excessive mud as a result of the flooding remains in my basement. Documents, decorations, photos, and personal belongings were destroyed. The city and the city's insurance would not claim responsibility and advised that I should seek compensation through my homeowner's insurance. My insurance denied my claim, saying that the city is responsible and liable for the damage. You can see that I was in between a rock and a hard place. And not having $25,000 to pull out of my pocket, I was at a loss of where to turn. I personally reached out to the mayor and six members of the Board of Alderman. I ultimately sent a letter to all members of the Board. I first reached out to the mayor by phone, went to City Hall to meet with him personally, and sent several emails to him. Ultimately, he told me that his hands were tied, and there was nothing he could do. The mayor could have helped me find resources to assist me in my dilemma, i.e. other organizations, and I felt that my city and my mayor had let me down. I had to become my own advocate by locating agencies and programs to reach out to me. I was fortunate to obtain some assistance which helped, but I still have a long way to go. My purpose here tonight is twofold. I'm looking for the authorization and guidance of the Board to help me in finding financial resources to further assist me in rectifying the damage to my homestead. Also, I recommend that the city have a system in place to assist Rutland city residents who have experienced this devastation from incidents such as this in the future. Some suggestions include providing a list of resources to the victims of such events, and looking into creating a supplemental fund with the help of the city's insurance that would allow the city to draw from to help assist victim homeowners. In closing, I want to give special thanks to Alderman Attori, Alderman Tadio, Alderman Davis, and DePoy, and President Donchus for the empathy and compassion that they afforded me during this very difficult time. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for TJ? Mr. Mayor?
If I could just respond as much as I could. I just want you to know that there is enough, a lot of empathy that goes around for the situation that Thomas has found himself on. I've talked to every member of the Board of Alderman, I believe, in the last few weeks. I've reached out to our insurance company several times, moved up the ladder, tried to consider, asked them to consider every possible support that they might be able to give to him, because he's right, he's in between a rock and a hard place. I reached out to a former commissioner of Public Works, asked them if there's been any precedent for the city ever covering a situation like this, and he said that there wasn't. The last thing I wanted to tell Mr. Kessup was there was nothing that we could do, but up to this point, there's nothing that I have been told by anybody that there is anything that we can do short of writing a check. One possible alternative that I did think of when I was mulling this over the weekend, and I have been thinking about this ever since this happened to you, Tom, is that if we could have some sort of a fund, we can't just, you know, write out a check. Possibly, you know, put some money up to let him borrow over a period of time, so he doesn't have to go into his retirement fund, he doesn't have to eat this, the whole thing himself. That's just a possibility, but, you know, I've talked to an awful lot of people, and nobody's been able to come to me with, you know, some sort of a way out of this. So, I just wanted to respond and let people know I've done everything that I think I can do.
Alderman Davis?
So, maybe at the city attorney, could you speak to, are you aware what the reason was that the leads of cities and towns denied our plan for Mr. Kessup?
Yeah, my understanding is that it, there was no negligence on the part of the city as far as, there are some occasions where work is being done on a pipe, or there's work being done somewhere nearby that causes the, or is more approximately related to the pipe bursting. This, as far as I know, I haven't really been very involved, but as far as I know, this appeared to be just a pipe that bursts randomly, and so that's why insurance will only cover something that was, I guess, an accident or where there was city negligence, but where there's just, you know, in some ways, it's not your typical natural disaster that we think of, but it's equivalent to that in the insurer's eyes.
So, if I may?
Yep.
So, Tom, I can't see.
Sure.
What, my name?
Sure.
What, you said some people have reached out, or organizations have reached out. Can you share with us what, who, or how they're helping you, or?
I mean, Brock has helped me. Chris actually was very helpful in terms of agencies, in terms of who to reach out to. He actually got me in some help with some contacts there, so, I mean, he did go above and beyond to see what else was out there. Along with Mike, you know, Mike had suggested that DPW write a letter just explaining what the cause of the damage was to submit to my insurance, which Mike did follow through, and I did get that letter as well, and that has been submitted. The appeal process is quite lengthy with the insurance. You know, it's a lot of phone calls, they have a presidential team that works on appeals, and I'm just, I've already gone through one appeal, but the second appeal is even further, so it's a lot in-depth, a lot of looking ahead, I mean, but, said and dandy, I mean, certain things are fixed and certain things aren't, and I mean, ultimately, you know, I just, I want my home back the way it was, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alderman Attori?
Thanks. And, you know, I think when I heard what happened to TJ, it's this idea that it could happen to any one of us at any given moment, and the idea that, you know, the insurance company is saying like, well, you need, if you had flood insurance, well, if you don't live near a river or a body of water, why would you ever do that?
Exactly.
And so, you know, the city, for all the reasons, you know, we can't just go out and pay everybody's, you know, things that happen, but that's what insurance is for. And so, one of the things that I've wondered and thought that maybe we could do, and I don't know if the city attorney has an opinion on this, is that perhaps there's a partnership here in terms of fighting the insurance, and working together to not only get insurance covered for you, but also change it in the future. You know, whether that's through the state, BISHKA, or whatever it is in terms of what insurance covers, but it feels like, you know, I just go back to thinking, I, I don't know what I would do if this happened to me. I do not have any sort of pockets of money where I can pull stuff from and make something like this happen. And so, I don't know what to do, and this is what I was telling you before, TJ, but I feel like that is something that maybe we can do. So, I don't know if there's an opinion from the city attorney about how we might be able to fight this fight with TJ in terms of going against insurance.
I think we can try to advocate possibly through the League of Cities and Towns, they have, you know, they have a lobbyist that, by that organization that kind of brings things from the municipalities to Montpelier. Certainly, we could try doing it directly as well, but it may be just talking about the situation that we've encountered, and trying to get BISHKA's attention, that there be some kind of disclosure requirement, that, you know, not that all of us read everything that's put in front of us, even myself as an attorney, I don't always read the fine print, but at least some kind of disclosure that even if you're not in a flood plain, that flood insurance has been, you know, offered, because if you live in an area where there's aging infrastructure, it's certainly more possible that it would happen than you would think. So, that might be something that we can, you know, there may be other cities that are in similar positions, so we could either band together through VLCT, or, you know, try to do something ourselves. I think it would be more useful to have a group effort rather than for us just to send a letter, or, you know, spend probably the time that it would take to try to get legislation through.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think that the other piece, the mayor talked about a fund of some kind, and I don't know if it was the mayor, or you, Matt, that there's a program through VLCT for sewage in particular.
Yep.
And so, perhaps that's something that we can do, and so I don't want to lose this, and so I guess I would like to refer to General Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to refer the issue to the General Committee. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, I've got Alderman DePoy and then Mayor.
Let me just throw in, I have been recently appointed, thank Mr. Lee Lorn, and we have a meeting Thursday, and I certainly can bring it up at that meeting, and they have a direct, you know, connection with the insurance companies, obviously, through this board. This must have come up in other communities, we're not the only community that has aging water pipes, and, you know, people define themselves in this sort of situation, but for them just to arbitrarily say no, and that's basically the answer I got. It was, it wasn't, you know, well, maybe, it was just an absolute no. And so, there's got to be some other way that we could address this sort of situation, you know, there isn't other people like Thomas to go through what he's got through, because it's not fair.
Alderman DePoy, then Alderman Gillum.
Well, I mean, as the mayor and Chris both pointed out, we have aging infrastructure, and stuff like this is going to happen as stuff gets older. I mean, this city has had a program of trying to update some of the pipes, some of the stormwater, some of the, you know, the separation projects have put new pipes in the ground that are much more reliable, more durable, but, I mean, in instances like this, it's old pipes that are, you know, some that we've noticed, some members on this board have found out go back to the Civil War, that's how old some of the pipes are. And, you know, I don't want to say that Vermont League of Cities and Towns isn't going to go bankrupt if they start covering these kinds of incidences, but there is some kind of pot of money, and I don't think it can be done at the city level, but in a community, in a statewide effort where the communities that do have public water and sewer supplies can start paying a rider on their insurance, or at least looking into what the cost would be to the cities, what the policies would cost us. I mean, if they're reasonable at some point, then maybe we look at having a rider on our insurance policy that will cover incidences like this, because this isn't going to be the first, or we know it's not the first, it's not going to be the last. Hopefully, none are as bad as TJ's, the extent of the damage at his house, but, you know, I think it would be very interesting to find out what, if, you know, in conversation in general, what a policy rider like that might look like, how much it might cost the taxpayers.
Alderman Gillum?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have you talked to, you have two units, right? The two units there?
No, I mean, no. We use, we use the, it's a, we use the units together as a family.
Because I was thinking maybe you could talk to Neighborhood Works, they have a loan program over there?
Yeah, I mean, the resources in which I needed in terms of, you know, the heating and stuff, like I said, Brock had stepped in and helped me with that, but there's still a lot, I mean, water remediation, cleanup, you know, the electrical had to come out of my own pocket, I had to take a loan against my retirement to pay for a lot of it. And the other thing was too, is I did mention a sinkhole as well. It sits in my backyard, and the city did say that they were responsible for making sure that was filled in, and I have yet to see it filled in, they were supposed to come back the previous week, and that's still four feet by about six feet. Mike saw it, I know Chris saw it, and, I mean, it's huge, I have family, I have a trampoline right near it, and it's just, it's huge. There's a, there's a city sewer pipe that runs in my backyard, and it's kind of zigzag, and DPW did say that that is indeed what that is, and what it was is, when the water came down, it kind of, it was like a drain in a sense, it took everything in my yard. I had my kid's sneakers, things like that, where they had played on the trampoline, just sucked everything right back into the sinkhole. So, there's a large hole in the backyard as well.
Okay, we need a follow-up on the Public Works Department. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks TJ. Okay, so we have a motion to refer to General, it's been seconded. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for coming in TJ.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll check back with the Commissioner and work on that sinkhole, I'll make sure he emails.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
You're in good time, everybody.
For coming in. Thank you. Okay, next up, outside the rail, Downtown Rutland Partnership, downtown street maintenance. Brian and Tiffany, come on up.
I'm Tiffany. Brian and I are here today from the Downtown Rutland Partnership. Many of you know us, you know what we do. At the Downtown Rutland Partnership, we offer the downtown community a range of services from small business grants to community events. Under our umbrella, we also currently manage different downtown streetscaping initiatives outside of the winter months. We are here today to request the Board of Alderman to refer downtown streetscaping initiatives and sidewalk maintenance to the Rec Committee for a discussion. I know that we all want a safe and a clean downtown. Positive first impressions of our city are absolutely critical and a foundational component of any plan of revitalizing Rutland. We feel that currently, we do not have the funding, the equipment, nor the staff bandwidth to meet the demand, and we all hurt when our beautification projects are neglected, and that's not by choice, that's just by the current design. Even in the summer months, onboarding a part-time seasonal employee every year takes us away from our other responsibilities. That isn't a sustainable nor an ideal model, so we would really like to sit down to discuss how we can make sure these streetscaping initiatives are set up to be successful, how they can be maintained and supported, because we all want a downtown that people can enjoy, because it's a downtown that we all love.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Talbot?
Motion to refer to Rec.
Motion to refer to the Recreation Department, it's been seconded. Alderman DePoy?
Tiffany, have you reached out to the Rec Department, have you had conversations with Tyler and Kim about?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We've sat down, and we know that everyone is really at capacity, and we're just kind of looking just to kind of sit down and discuss how it can be addressed, just because we know currently, you know, it took us quite a bit of bandwidth to even get someone onboard as a seasonal employee. We don't have the proper equipment even to address the weeding of the downtown sidewalks, so we did kind of sit down and discuss going forward, and, you know, we've reached out to DPW too, to let them know that we're really just looking to have a conversation, just to kind of get on the same page, to have a sustainable path going forward.
See what the needs are?
Yeah, absolutely.
And see what they can provide, if anything, hopefully, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Gillum?
Make sure you invite the Public Works Commissioner. You're the chair.
I am.
I was going to add an amendment to that, just make sure he's invited.
Sounds good. All right, any other questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Lovett needs a document signed, Chief, come on up.
Tonight, I'm here for the annual reappointment of the committee members for the Rutland Emergency Management Committee. Typically, it's the emergency management director, myself, and an alternate, which is Deputy Chief Getney at the fire station. This committee meets on a regular basis to try to leverage some funds for emergency management planning, certainly what we went through with the Dunkley Pond issue, we prioritize the needs of the community, and then we work to try to facilitate funding for some of those things, so. Basically, just looking for your permission to have the president sign the document for this year.
I'll suspend the rules?
We have a motion to suspend the rules, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion to authorize the chair to sign the document, it's been seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, chief. Okay. We are still in outside the rail. If you would like to speak to the Board on issues that are not on the agenda this evening, this is your opportunity. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from outside the rail? Okay, Lopee, you can go first, and then we'll have Grant go after you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Lopee LaRoe. Greetings to all of the Alderman people and everybody else, the community. I am here to speak about the fluoridation of our water supply. I know that there's going to be a period afterwards, but it was suggested that perhaps I should, I wasn't here at the previous.
It's okay, I'll let you speak on that item, agenda item, when we get to it, if that's okay. Is that all right?
That's totally fine, yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Grant, come on up. Can you just state your name, city residence, and?
Yep, good evening, I'm Grant Chigabaski, I'm actually from Brandon, Vermont, this is my partner.
I'm Ronnie, I'm in Cuttingsville, I live in Cuttingsville.
Great, thank you.
So, we're here tonight because we actually were not on the agenda, but we're anticipating getting our cannabis license for our retail location on 158 Main Street at the old Mike's Hobbies location.
North Main Street.
North Main Street, and we were told that we were supposed to wait till our license that we received from our state before we could go in front of the Board, but we were hoping to open before the 21st, so we're kind of in the catch-22 as well, where we were hoping to get our license on Wednesday and open before the 21st, and we aren't on the agenda, and we were told we needed to wait until we got our license, so we were hoping to kind of get in between that date, but, yeah, just kind of here to introduce ourselves and let you know our situation.
We've spoken with the Compliance and Licensing Board from the CCB at the state level, and they both said we both look good, we're anticipating Wednesday for a license to share.
Yeah, we should get our license on Wednesday, so, that's our, and we're not opening this week, but we're hoping to open next week.
Yeah, before the 21st, ideally, this process is taking a lot longer than we've anticipated, of course, but, yeah, that's the situation we're in, yeah.
Alderman DePoy?
So, can I ask the clerk, would approval have to wait until the 21st if they don't get their state certificate till Wednesday?
So, under the guidance of the Cannabis Board, I mean, you folks have the right, you really are the policymakers, and it's unfortunate that this is a completely new entity, it's something that's just come about. Legalization of marijuana's been granted in the state of Vermont, the voters approved it. We just haven't quite gotten down to the brass tacks yet of how the city is going to do it. I'll do whatever you would like me to do. We technically don't have any type of licensing setup for this, there is no fee set up for this. The one retailer that is open was given that opportunity because they were, back in July, you know, really ready to go with this kind of project and stuff, but I don't know how to answer that in regards, because technically, Attorney Blumer may be able to answer that for us as far as that goes. We usually wait for the state to dictate that there is approval, and then after that, we kind of move forward with the process.
Attorney Blumer?
Yeah, so, my understanding, and this is new to everybody, but my understanding is that the state is not supposed to issue their license until they've confirmed that the municipality has approved the local license.
Process is liquor.
Now, the first time around, they may not have been aware that we had adopted our own local licensing program, but they're definitely aware now, so I don't know if there's miscommunication or confusion on their end, but we do, I mean, some of you will recall, we do have a several-page resolution where we laid out the procedure for the Board of Cannabis Control, which has a whole list of things that need to be submitted as an application to this Board. So, you know, these folks obviously haven't, weren't aware of that, or, you know, I thought it was the state that would be letting them know that as part of the process, they would need to come to us to go through our processes well, but it sounds like that hasn't happened, so.
So, I've submitted all the paperwork that is necessary, required from the town, I've submitted to Henry, I think I dropped it Thursday, all the paperwork that the state required, and then everything that the Rutland CCB required.
We have also reached out to the state, and the state is aware that the Rutland has formed their own CCB. They said they were going to reach out to you guys directly, even though they don't usually do that before they give out the licenses, but they have acknowledged that we should receive our license on Wednesday, and that it would make an exception to reach out to you guys directly. I don't know if they've done that, but we've done everything on our part as far as trying to appease the state, trying to appease the town. We got our home, our occupancy from the Fire Marshal, and we're ready to go, but obviously, we need the okay from you guys, so we're trying to make sure we can jump through all the hoops that are necessary to do that.
Yep. So, the formal request, Department of Liquor and Lottery, as they're known by now, has instilled a new online application process. When there is an application, it's been very few, there's been a lot of catering-type things, the, what was it, this shop and sip that happened, there was a fair amount of activity for that. There's been one tobacco licensing, and there was the, is it Mountain Girl? That was the original applicant. I did receive a request from them for approval. I haven't seen a request for these gentlemen's application yet from the state in that capacity, and again, I can't tell you which is coming first, the cart or the horse, as far as this goes. Back in the good old days, for licensing of first-class, second-class, third-class licensing, those kind of things, we more or less, you know, had a bite at the apple. The state wanted to know if there was any problems within any of those entities that were out there, but they started the renewal process and did those kind of things, so, again, this is fairly new, and I really haven't had any guidance from anybody in regards to that so-called Rutland licensing process, if there's a fee, associated fee, how many, when, where, what the city would like to do with that, so. But again, I work for you folks, you just tell me what you would like to do, and I have received documents from the gentleman, as he stated. I can't confirm if it's a full packet or it's a non-full packet, it's a pretty big packet, there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah, there could be in there, yeah.
There's no question about that. I mean, the state's requiring a bunch of stuff that I have not seen before, even for, you know, regular licensing applicants through the DLC and stuff.
So, I'm sorry, I was just going to ask a procedural question, probably of both of you. We haven't gotten to additions and deletions of the agenda. The clerk's got all the information from these gentlemen, so if it's something that can be taken up and added to the agenda and taken up under Cannabis Control Commissioners, then why not?
Like approval pending the state licensure type of thing? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so at least at the city level, it's approved if that's what we so choose.
I mean, we could, I don't know if Henry has it downstairs, and we could do it at the end, I'm just thinking, without giving too much legal advice here in the public forum, I don't know that you'd want to approve at sight unseen of the documents, and then the next person comes through and you have an issue, but, you know, you've approved another application without reviewing the documents, so my question was going to be, is there a Board of Tax Abatement meeting next? So, my question was going to be, is there a Board of Tax Abatement meeting next week?
The 14th?
Wednesday, the 16th.
It's the 14th.
It was changed.
Oh, that's right.
At the Cedar event.
That's right, yeah.
So, that could be another option to warn a meeting of the Board of Cannabis Control Commissioners. Take 10 minutes or 15 minutes. You know, it gets them the license, or our piece of it, before the 21st at least. But unless you have everything downstairs, and we can go through it and kind of make sure that everything that we ask for is there, and then we can present it at the end of the meeting, you know, we could add it, and we could run down and look at it. And we could try to do it tonight, but it may be a little helter-skelter, and there may be something missing.
Any other further, any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right. Hearing, Bill, you look like you want one. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll decide what to do and let you guys know.
Sure. 16th, but I meant 21st.
Next free time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak outside the rail?
Well, I see that the discussion of the committee report on fluoridation is at the tail end of the committee reports, and I'm not sure how long it's going to take.
We're going to actually probably move it up in the agenda, Jack.
Okay.
Did you want to speak on the fluoridation issue?
Because if you do, I need you to... There are a number of people here who would like to weigh in, so...
Absolutely.
I have a short comment to make, too.
That's great. So, when the time... We'll try to move that up in the agenda and then get that right coming up after the mayor's... After the mayor's piece. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from outside the rail on items that are not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, you've got a full agenda, so I'll try to be brief as I can. I have one agenda item there for you, and that is to present and make a few remarks about the proposed 2024 Rutland City Municipal Budget. So, again, good evening, everyone. The article in Wednesday's paper highlighted parts of the budget. I just wanted to expand a little bit on the budget itself. As we are all aware, inflation is currently running at E percent, and it doesn't look like it's going to obey anytime soon. This factor has affected almost everything we do here at City Hall, and certainly everything that we purchase. As you all know, from your home heating fuel, market price is now in the $5.70 range. Rack price, hopefully, you've... Some of you have locked in. We were lucky enough to lock in at $3.62 a gallon for this upcoming winter season. I budgeted at $3.75. Of course, that's the following year, but who knows where it's going to be at that time. Gasoline, $3.90. We see it going up. I budgeted $4 in your budget that you had before you, but again, it's a guess at where it's going to be in the next 12 to 18 months. Healthcare costs, they've gone up. Thankfully, not as much as they may have. We were able to negotiate with Blue Cross and Blue Shield to move to the EPO product. After speaking with all of our unions, we have agreement in place. So, the increase from last year to this year is $100,000 instead of $300,000. So, that's saving our taxpayers a couple of hundred thousand, which is a considerable amount of money. We only have one new full-time position in this budget, is for a civilian position over at the PD that is going to be complementing the one civilian position that we added in this year's budget. As you remember, these positions help lighten the load for the sworn officers to concentrate on the higher priority calls, while our non-sworn officers or non-s sworn personnel will be able to handle those non-emergency calls and quality-of-life calls. And up to this point, it seems to be working out very well. We certainly got the right person in that job right now, and that's Matt Prowdy. He's doing a great job. The city attorney's budget, I'll highlight that once again. It's seeing a total savings of $88,000, and that is due to eliminating funding for the assistant city attorney's position, which we've been unable to fulfill in this last year, and it doesn't look like we're going to have any luck going forward. So, we took that out, and we moved our administrative... Our city attorneys and my administrative assistant position from full-time to part-time, and that has saved us a considerable amount of money, too. And finally, there's no large equipment purchases in the budget due to your decision to fund some larger equipment for the DPW out of the ARPA funding, and that's helped the DPW budget tremendously. And we fully fund the pension going forward again this year, which is very important to keep up with our obligations. So, as I mentioned in the article, the overall budget is up only 2.8%. In this time of record-high inflation, increasing fuel costs, healthcare costs, and extremely large increases for materials, which we believe... We do believe this budget is not only a modest one, but it's a reasonably request. One that we're going to bring forward to... One that we look to the taxpayers' pocketbooks as a top of mind, but one that is very defensible, I hope, in these times, and one that will continue to move our city forward. So, with having all that said, I do look forward to our discussions with the committees. I want to thank Alderman DePoy, Tom, for scheduling his meeting this coming Thursday for the REC department budget. And I would look forward to a meeting with the rest of the committees in the next few weeks. And I will ask for a referral for all these budgets to the appropriate committees. And I think Alderman Heck, or Alderman Heck, City Clerk Heck has that. Alderman Heck, it was Alderman Heck.
It was. Alderman DePoy.
So, Mr. President, I did schedule the REC committee hearing, and that was a little premature because we haven't actually referred this budget yet. But the reason I did is because there are some very tight schedules for vacation time, for family time, and that sort of thing. So, I want to thank my fellow Alderman over there for reminding me I didn't even have this budget yet. But it is scheduled with the anticipation of getting this budget, and I just wanted to let you know it's to accommodate the different, the many different schedules for this meeting, so... That also said, I also want to congratulate the mayor. 2.8% on this budget for a 2.8% increase is pretty incredible, given the rise in... The raises that are going around in city government contractual, you know, colas and everything else that's going on. A lot of the, you know, infrastructure repairs and everything, you know, we've been talking about the water repairs today. I mean, the hard work of the different departments to get grants to offset the budget that's going on right now with the increases in labor, in costs of any of the supplies, and different, you know, materials needed for these jobs. It's to come in at 2.8%. I was fully expecting a 5% budget increase. 2.8% is great, but, Mr. Mayor, keep in mind, I always make proposals to this board for cuts, so it may come in lower than 2.8%, if this board so chooses.
Alderman Dory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, earlier today, the microphone was not in front of Alderman DePoy, and now we know why. Could I make a motion to refer the budget to the appropriate committee?
We have a motion to refer the budget to the appropriate committees. It's been seconded. Any further discussion on the budget as presented?
I have one last question, Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so, the police budget, how many sworn officers are included in that? We always talk about that. I think we were like around 40 most of the time. We dropped to about 35 or 34.
32.
So, we're at 32.
32 sworn and two civilians.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Motion to refer. Any further questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Very good. Moving on from communications from the mayor to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or the deletions to the agenda this evening? Alderman Wickham.
President Dunn, just a question. If it would be possible to move up one of my many finance committee reports, in particular, ARPA funds review? We have the chief of police here who wishes to speak to this. He is one of the proposed approved items, and he clearly has a very serious matter he needs to attend to within the city.
Okay, very good. So, we have... We're going to move the... Which one is that, the ARPA funds review?
Yes.
So, we're going to move two items. Alderman Wickham's Finance Committee Report for ARPA Funds Review and Alderman Dory's Public Works Committee. We'll do that in that order, if that's good with everybody. Can I get a motion to move those up on the agenda?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, so we'll start with you, Alderman Wickham.
All right, thank you, President Dunn.
Are you still on addition, sorry?
Yeah, we can still do additions, yes.
Or no?
Well, I didn't see any other hands raised before his, but you're welcome.
I just didn't know if the board wanted to take up the issue of the gentleman that are here tonight, or if we want to wait until, as the city attorney had suggested, maybe waiting until the next... The meeting next week for...
On the 16th, tax abatements.
On the tax abatements.
So, any... City Attorney.
Just to reiterate, I mean, if we took a recess, and if Henry thinks he can put his hands on the documents, we could go down, he and I could go down, we could print them off or whatever form they're in, and while we're going through the other business, I could be looking to see if it's all there. Distribute it. I guess, again, my recommendation would be not to issue the license without looking at the paperwork.
I agree.
And so, if there's a possibility that we can get, retrieve the paperwork and make sure it's all there by the end of the meeting and distribute it and have them present, then that's an option, but...
Okay.
Just a quick question. Gentlemen, you said the state was going to give you a decision on this coming Wednesday. Is that...
That's what we expect. So, they have a Wednesday meeting every Wednesday, and we've given them all the paperwork, which is, I assure you, 10 times more than what you guys are asking for. And they have their own attorneys that have vetted all this stuff. But I appreciate your concern as well, and I definitely assure you that we anticipate getting our license on Wednesday, which is why we're here today, because we really are hoping to get their license.
So, if I may, at that point in time, I'm assuming that the state may submit an approval from the city. So, you could still look over the paperwork. I know personally, I would feel better if the state's approved, kind of takes some of the due diligence off of our part. Not that you folks can't have questions or won't have questions, but at least you know the big review is done. So, if you do put it on an agenda or call a special meeting, at that point in time, I should be able to have an answer about what is being done or where they're at in that process. At which point, if you approve it, I can go ahead and send in the approval to the state, and they should be able to get their license, I would assume, that day after that tax abatement hearing, as far as that goes.
Okay, Alderman Gill.
I agree we need to do that. Not something against you guys. I've been in your shoes, trying to wait for a liquor license and all. I understand all that, but we need to see the documentation, because this is the first time around with all this. So, I think we should do it in the cannabis meeting and get the paperwork in front of us, and then we will prove it next week.
That's understandable. I appreciate you for bringing it up again and getting your back on it and trying to make this work. But I appreciate you guys at least giving us a chance to hear us out. So, thank you. We'll be back next week, I guess.
Thank you.
Did you want to say?
So, do we need to make a motion to...
Well, we're still in additions and deletions, so if we do, we should wait till new business. But I think we're good with potentially just warning the meeting after this one? Okay, great. All right.
Do we need a motion to warn it?
Not... If we did, we wouldn't do it right now.
Okay, all right. Gotcha.
And I don't think we do. I think we can... So, I'll make that call, and I'll have Henry warn it, okay? So, Henry, I'm going to have you warn the meeting, but I'll do that after this meeting, so...
Yep.
The mayor can warn it.
All right. Still in additions and deletions to the agenda. Anything else? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Alderman Wickham, if you could proceed with your ARPA.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a lot of motions coming here, everyone. So, the first finance committee met on October 20th. The topic was the ARPA funds review to address the outstanding requests that still remained. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The committee first looked at ARPA requests that were believed to not require immediate funding, believed there to be alternative funding sources, or did not believe represented an immediate need for Rutland City. So, the items not funded. First, the committee opted not to fund downtown city Wi-Fi in the amount of $300,000. The importance of the project was noted by the committee, and it was recommended that alternative funding sources be sought first. It was also noted that downtown Wi-Fi should likely coincide with the future development of Center Street. The committee opted not to fund the wastewater treatment plant roof replacement in the amount of $400,000. It was noted that the need was not immediate, and that this project could be addressed through the capital improvement program and the creation of a capital improvement fund. The committee opted not to fund the correlator to locate leak valves in the amount of $20,000. Commissioner Rotundo indicated this could be added to his budget. The committee opted to not fund the PD ADA compliance project in the amount of $60,000. The requests remain open as the care committee works to identify possible grants associated with ADA upgrades. The committee opted to not fund $25,000 PD heat pump requests, as Chief Cullen cited that this could be applied to the operating budget. The committee opted not to fund $200,000 water treatment plant land acquisition request. The committee opted to not fund $300,000 water distribution Chaplain Ave main replacement. The committee opted not to fund the $50,000 City Hall building upgrades at this time. The committee opted not to take up the $80,000 request for city employee premium pay at this time. So, what we did fund, and here comes all the motions. Alderman Talbot made a motion to fund the parking meters in the amount of $100,000. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussions, questions, or comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alderman Talbot made a motion to fund $50,000 of the $500,000 requests for Center Street Utilities Infrastructure to be put toward an engineering study. Motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And just a quick note, the committee discussed that further funding would be needed toward the Center Street project as it progressed. Next, Alderman Davis made a motion to approve an additional $10,000 to the IT full-service managed service provider. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, just real quick, our IT service provider is here. If we have any questions? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for coming, Mike.
All right.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Alderman Wickham made a motion to approve $40,000 request for PD dispatch upgrades to workstations. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. Alderman Wickham made a motion to assign up to $200,000 for the PD HVAC upgrades, motion... Upgrades controls. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussions? PD is here. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alderman Wickham made a motion to fund the DPW street request for the street sweeper in the amount of $325,000 and the loader in the amount of $300,000. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Alderman Davis made a motion to approve $24,000 request for PD officer premium pay. The motion passed 3 to 1, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Alderman... Alderwoman Savage made a motion to approve $125,000 for fire air pack requests. The motion passed 4-0, and I so move.
Second.
There we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
And the meeting adjourned at 6:45 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Wickham. That was record-breaking. Alderman Gill.
May I make a personal comment before the chief leaves?
Yep.
We had an incident this afternoon in my neighborhood, which was very, very, very serious. We had a casualty, which is still probably sitting in the middle of the street. The professionalism of our police force of locking that neighborhood up and securing that neighborhood was very, very professional. It was very organized. From my point of view, because I was right on top of it, just one house away from me, and I was very impressed how they secured the whole area and protected the neighborhoods. Thank you very much, chief, for doing that and your team. I think the neighborhoods, what I heard in the street, that they felt safe, that you guys had secured the area and made it safe for them to be in that neighborhood. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for being here. We good? Any other topics on... Any other questions or comments on Alderman Wickham's report? All right. Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to Alderman Dory's Public Works Committee Report. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee met on Wednesday, October 19th, to discuss fluoridation of the public water supply. I served as chair. Other members present were Alderman Barbara Gallo, Alderman Gillum, and Alderman DePoy. Other Aldermen present were President Dungus, Alderman Talbot, and Alderwoman Davis. There was a whole lot of people present, mostly residents, but also in the audi- in that, the, uh, at, present at the meeting were Mayor Lair, Jim Rotundo, Scott Taggart from the Water Treatment Plant, Jack Crowther, Stuart Cooper from the Fluoride Action Network, Renee Wiskay from the Department of Health, Robin Miller from Department of Health, and dentist Dr. Tom Upsal, Dr. Judy Fish, and a whole lot of other, uh, community members. The meeting convened at 5:30 PM to discuss the request by a number of city residents to stop the systemic fluoridation of the Rutland City water supply. The chair started the meeting with the city attorney's legal opinion that the city charter gives only the DPW commissioner the authority to decide what is put in the water, and that limitations to this authority must be done through the charter. The meeting then was an opportunity to hear the reasons for and against fluoridating the water, but the board would need to refer a charter change if it desired to limit fluoridation. The chair asked those in support of fluoridation to present their information. Robin Miller from the Department of, Vermont Department of Health spoke first, reading a letter from the Commissioner of Department of Health, Dr. Levine, which discussed the evidence-based research for fluoridation. Robin then discussed Rutland's fluoridation program, commenting on the strength of Scott Taggart and the DPW team. She also discussed the challenges Rutland faces with higher poverty rates, and the documented benefits that a fluoridated water supply has on this population. Doctors Upsal and Dr. Fish and Christina Sweet discussed from their perspective, working with children and adults across the region, and their perspective that those who live with fluoridated water have better oral health than those who do not. Next, the committee heard from about 10 community members and other advocates who would like to stop fluoridation. Peg Florrie spoke of the negative impact of fluoridation on those with medical conditions. Mary Lou Alberts discussed her experiences in Bennington as they fought to not fluoridate the water there. City residents discussed their perspective and the concern that has been brought to light by new studies. Of particular interest to some residents was the idea of a lack of consent, um, for fluoridating the water, and that city residents were being given fluoride through the water supply without their consent. Stuart Cooper, the executive director of the Fluoride Action Network, spoke of a number of studies that provide evidence of harm from fluoridated water supplies, including studies published in mainstream journals. He discussed a number of municipalities and states who are discussing the issue, and have, are choosing to stop fluoridation, or to not start it. He recommended that we review the research and make our own determination. Stuart had sent, um, all of us some links to, um, some of the presentations and some of the, um, studies, and, um, Robin Miller also sent some links, um, and information to some of their information. The meeting ended at 7:30 with no motions being made. This report was for information only, and the issue will stay in committee for any further discussion. There is a video of the DPW committee meeting, for anyone who would like to watch it, is on the PEG TV YouTube channel. Thanks to, uh, Jack Crowther and, um, yeah, thanks to Jack.
Great, okay, before we open for questions, comments, and discussion, I will mention that because this issue was in committee, and still is in committee, that I'd like you to limit your time. So, the comments, I'm gonna limit you to five minutes, and if you wanna say something beyond that, when it comes back up in the committee, or we have another discussion, that'll be the time for that. Okay? Alright. Um, I'll let Lopey go first, and then Tom.
Has there been any recommendation of the committee?
There's been no recommendation of the committee, as of yet. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, no, there's no.
As a point of order, then, um, why are we spending all this time kinda reviewing what? Is this for the full board?
This is for the full board. That's correct.
Thank you.
No problem, Tom. Go, go ahead, Lopey.
Yes.
As a point of order, I, I, if I'm understanding what Dr. Upsal's saying, there is no motion on the floor for the board to consider, there is no change proposed at this time.
That is correct.
Hello, again, um, I'm Stole Lopey, and I, um, did watch the PEG TV, um, video of, it wasn't the DPW meeting, though I think it was the last Alderman meeting. It was very informative, and as I've been going throughout my days since I watched it and pondering this really important issue, um, I keep thinking about, um, well, you know, consent. And it really is a simple matter of consent, um, that there are people, uh, in our community that do not consent, myself among them, um, and that we haven't given, been given the opportunity to consent or to remove our consent, um, and it's just something that is foisted upon us. And I wanted to, um, offer an, a thought experiment for everybody to ponder, um, what if, if you, if you would imagine our town having clean water that has no added me- medicines in it, and allowed those people who wish to have the medicine to add it to their own personal water, because it is so hard to remove it, but it is so simple to add it, should you want it, in your water. And it would also be a lot more affordable for the city to supply it for those who wish to have it, and I wonder how many people would actually decide to put it personally into their water, because the act of putting a substance into your water supply, the very act of doing so, reminds us that we are ingesting something that is added. Personally, I wouldn't want to add anything to my water. I, I prefer to drink pure spring water, um, and the cost of a, how, for whole-house water filtration system is quite prohibited. I've been looking into it. Although I do only drink spring water, I'm concerned about the amount of water that my body absorbs while I'm taking a bath, and also I'm, I have immense concern about the amount of wa- fluoridation, fluoride that is going down into the sewage, and down into Otter Creek, and then out into, you know, Lake Champlain, and into, just into our, our water systems, and I do fervently believe that water is life, and it is an essential, an essential part of a healthy body, and, um, I think it's unconscionable, actually. I think it's actually a crime to be adding this hazardous waste to our water supply. It's very serious. It's very detrimental, and for those that do, you know, wish to have it, they're welcome to add it themselves. The essential message I wanted to bring is that it's so much easier to, to add to water than to remove from the water. I talked to my plumber, and he said it would cost like between 600 and 700 bucks just to install the system. I'm a DIYer, and, you know, I'd probably end up with a flooded basement like, um, oh, our friend J- was it JT?
TJ.
TJ. And, you know, just as an aside, not to be flippant, but maybe we could take the $7,000 that is the budget line for buying fluoride next, uh, next time around, and give it to TJ, or JT, TJ. Not to be flippant, but I couldn't help but think that, you know. It's obvious, you know, it's a water issue. Anyway, thank you for your time. I definitely removed my consent, and I really, really, dearly hope that somebody will make a motion, someone will make an action. You guys are great, you guys are, are representatives, I voted for many of you, I'm happy to see you here. Just please do something to help us have clean water. To have clean water is essential to health.
Thank you, Lopey.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak, Alderman Torrey's report? Alderman DePoy?
So, I just wanted to remind everyone that we were told the other night that the in-water distribution, or, uh, maybe it's water treatment, I guess, that the fluoride is not even in the budget. So, in the budget process, there's nothing to do. So this is solely an issue, because, you know, Jack and I have talked about in the past of removing the funding for it, so that it just doesn't, we just don't buy it. But that's not an issue this time, and I just wanted to look to the mayor for clarification that that's the case? Okay. And, and that's, uh, what I understood too. So, it's not even in the budget for us to remove this time. It would be a next-year issue if we wanted to remove it from the budget. So it's really a, an issue at this point of whether we wanted to do, um, as Alderman Torrey had said, if, if we wanted to do a charter change. And that process, um, you know, would take a couple of years probably to accomplish, so. That's where we're at with fluoridation.
Just to confirm that my understanding is correct, if we were to do a charter change, it would have to go to the voters, and this issue went to the voters in 2016, 2018, and they rejected it, a change to fluoridation, 3 to 1, 2 to 1, something?
3 to 1.
That's correct.
Quite, quite strongly.
That is correct. Any other Aldermen first? Okay, Jack, do you wanna?
Well, at the October 19th meeting, Chris reported on the...
Jack, can you step up to the podium? Is that alright? Thanks.
At the October 19th meeting, Chris reported on the, um, city attorney's opinion, and it included the option of an ordinance that would remove the authority to fluor- fluoridate the water supply from the Public Works Commissioner, and, um, that was a pathway that I appreciated, and, and I hope, um, assuming that's a correct representation of what the attorney said, I would hope that the board would, uh, consider taking that authority from the commissioner, and then, and then presumably it's in their hands, and they could simply stop fluoridation by that route, which is a lot more efficient than, uh, going through the whole charter change. And, and another option that was mentioned was simply, um, declining to make the purchase in January, which is when, when the next purchase of fluoride would come up, and that would also be, that would, as an Alderman said, that would tie the commissioner's hands, uh, assuming the commissioner still had the authority. So, um, there's some other routes than a charter change.
Alderman Torrey?
Thanks, and so just to correct, I was wrong at that meeting, Jack. I misread the report, his, his notes, and when I went to talk to him the next day, or a couple of days later, and sugge- and said that to him, to the attorney, he told me I misunderstood what he had written. So I apologize, it's not through an ordinance that I know of. He was, he, he had said a charter change, and I misinterpreted it when I read it at that meeting. So, my apologies. I, if I could, the other, the one other thing that I did say is that, because it is through that, that avenue, the only other option that we might have is something, um, that the board has done previously around the money for pension deficit, and that was make a resolution that the board wanted that to happen, and then it would be up to the administration to carry that out. They don't have to, of course, because there's nothing to limit it, but that was the other option, is that if this board decided to remove fluoride, we couldn't do it, but we could make a resolution that would, you know, ask for it to be done. Whether it would be done or not would always be up to the commissioner unless we had the charter change. So, that was another option, if this board would so.
Okay. So are there any other further questions on Alderman Torrey's report from the committee meeting that he reported on? Okay. Go ahead. Sir? Stand up, yep, if you wouldn't mind, stand up, come over to the podium. State your name, if you wouldn't mind, and...
Dimitri Apetelos. You know, when I listen to this sort of discussion on fluoridation, it reminds me a little bit about the discussion we had about GMOs 15, 20 years ago. Some of you probably know that at that time, I was heading up a committee, uh, in Vermont. I was on, you know, all the radio stations regarding, um, you know, studying this topic more closely. We invited, um, at that time it was Smith who wrote Seeds of Deception, uh, to come speak, and then we had the states, we put together the states' only scientific conference to discuss this issue. So, back then, it was very difficult, our legislators didn't know anything about glyphosate. And we, as a grassroots, you know, organization, started to educate our legislators, and then after we had the conference, there was sort of a turning point. People became more aware, aware of the issues, we had a lot of representatives attend the conference, and the tide started to change, and as you know, the Farmers Protection Act passed, you know, the Senate and the House, but it was vetoed by the governor at the time, thinking, assuming that it was bad for business. But one of the key things was, the public didn't know about the flavor-savor tomato. And, um, you know, when, you know, that, when we're talking about fluoride, the public doesn't really understand the fluoridation issue. Fluoride is almost like the glyphosate issue. It's now been 20 years, we've had, I wanna say 40 or 50 lawsuits internationally against Monsanto, and it's been pretty well, you know, settled that glyphosate is dangerous. It's a known carcinogen, and known toxin, et cetera, et cetera. Fluoridation is sort of a similar issue. With the flavor-savor tomato, people didn't know that they were purchasing tomatoes that were part fish and part tomato. When the public became aware of that, they became more concerned about the issue. With fluoridation, we know that fluoridation is, you know, there are whole host, and you know, you can cherry pick the, uh, the research that's, that's out there, but there's now overwhelming documentation that fluoride is simply not beneficial for the body. If you look at other industrialized countries, you have to say, I mean, look at Europe. You know, we just got back from a trip in Europe, and it's like living, it is like living in a different world. But in Europe, with the exception of perhaps the United Kingdom, there's very little, if any, fluoridation at all, and yet, their tooth health, you know, their diets are similar to ours, you know? Their tooth health is just as good, if not better, than, you know, American tooth health. So, you guys have the studies, use your common sense, dive into the material, because really, um, it's in the details, guys. You know, it's, uh, it's much easier, who was it who said, it's much easier to take something, um, to put something in the water than it is to take out. And I have a whole-house filter, and I know how expensive they are to install, and how to, you know, I, you have to replace the filters twice a year, um, and, so anyway, that's my two cents. I don't know what it's worth, but I hope it was helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so because this is still in committee, we're gonna move on from this issue now? If you'd like to, uh, talk to... I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you did have a chance to speak. Lopey, I'm sorry, but we do have to move on. I apologize. I thank you very much. So if you would like to bring this topic back up, Alderman Torrey is still the chair, and this is still in committee, so that is a potential option for the future, um, but at, at this point, the discussion's gonna be closed for the evening. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Alright, uh, moving on, Alderman Whitcomb, Finance Committee, Local Option Tax Assigning Revenue, Discussion, Capital Improvement Fund. Yes, Alderman Torrey?
I didn't know if we wanted to go back to the...
Reports and letters.
Oh, sorry, yes, I, thank you. You're right.
I just, I, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. Thank you. So, no, no, Barbara, you're gonna be here forever. Thank you for putting me back on track, I appreciate it.
So, uh, we are actually supposed to be in reports and letters from department heads and officials, and Barbara Spalding, um, has a BIAP grant request for us. This is pages 6 through 9 in your packet, and Barbara, thank you very much for your patience.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Um, so this is my first time presenting a BIAP application, so please bear with me. But on October 25th, the RRA made a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen to support a $5,000 BIAP grant to LT's Little Dog Camp. I sent you copies of the application, and Mary Shipley is here to answer any questions that you might have. She's the applicant. She, um, actually moved here from Virginia, purchased a vacant property.
Raleigh.
Raleigh?
Raleigh.
I'm sorry, from Raleigh, and, uh, purchased a vacant property and is converting it into this business, and, uh...
Took an eyesore.
Yeah.
Trying to make it better, so...
Thank you.
So, yes, well, I'd like to say thank you, too.
So, if you have any questions?
So maybe just tell us about the business?
Um, it's, it's, it used to be the old lounge mount on the corner of school and Meadow.
Oh, sure, yeah.
You know, and so I've got it, and I wanna make a small dog daycare. Right, so, I, the space isn't large enough for big dogs. I don't have anything against big dogs. It's just the space didn't lend itself for that. And I have small dogs, and they're just easier to care for, so...
Alderman Talbot.
Great Dane, Lopee O.
I'm sorry?
Great Dane.
Great Dains, unless they're like newborn.
You know, I think they hit that, I'm only going to do like 25 pounds and under, so I think you might have a few weeks I can watch the Great Dane, but that's about it.
Alderman Talbot.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Your motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion to approve the buy-up grant request.
Second.
Your motion to approve the buy-up grant request has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or further discussion?
Good luck.
Thank you. Soon, I'm working very hard. Scar is to prove it right there.
Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list, Attorney Blumer, acquisition of Piedmont Pond and Associated Dam. Attorney Blumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, today, just looking for a referral to the Committee of Public Works, some folks will be familiar with the Moonbrook impairment and some of the settlement documents that the city has signed over the years to remediate the issues that the states identified. One of the parts of the plan is to do some work up at Piedmont Pond, and so, this, this acquisition is part of that plan. But it probably would warrant a little bit longer discussion, so just looking for a referral to Committee of Public Works.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion to refer to Committee of Public Works. Has been seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Superintendent Peters authorized the mayor to sign the NBF contract. This is pages 10 through 9 in your packet.
Thank you for your patience, by the way.
So, I, I do have two things I just wanted to add. I wanted to do a couple of thanks. We had the Halloween parade, and I wanted to thank, yep. Thanks our department heads for all the help, and it was, it was great. I mean, obviously, if I could order up that weather every year, that would be awesome. But I also wanted to thank Matt Blumer and the mayor for their persistence in the amendment for the Corcel Building. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we came, this has been about a six-month process to get the D changed, so Community Care will be renting out the office space only, which will bring in revenue. But I wanted to thank Matt, because it's, it's, it's been an every week update with, with getting that D changed, so thank you to, to Matt for that. And I couldn't put that on the agenda, because it was, it happened on Friday, and I just, I just thought it was really important to share that. Okay, so, authorization for the mayor to sign the contract between the city and NBF for Main Street Park and the Architectural Design Service. Back in July, we came, it was awarded to NBF, but I did not ask for the mayor to approve it, and the contract did come in.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign, is that what you need?
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign?
Second.
Has been seconded? Any comments, questions, or discussion for Superintendent Peters? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, don't leave yet.
Yep.
Superintendent Peters, update on Justin Memorial Park.
Yes, so, I just wanted to let the board know that we did receive the $20,000 grant from the Department of Buildings and General Services. So, that puts us at about 75% of our goal. The rest of, of the remaining money will be coming from Justin Park and donations. You can, you can donate through the rec, you can donate through the church, I believe it's Grace Church, that they're also raising money toward. They had a basket raffle this past weekend where they raised great money, and a little over $2,000. So, you know, $2,000, $1,500 are coming in. Another way that you can support is through the bricks, the purchasing of the bricks. You can call the rec department, we can get you right to where you need to go. That's also fundraising money that's going to go into the park. We have ordered the equipment, the playground structure, and we plan on moving on that as soon as the weather breaks, when the equipment comes in. We're thinking April, May. So, we're really on, we're on track, but I just wanted to give that update that we did receive the grant.
Great. Any questions for Superintendent Peters?
I just have one.
Alderman Davis.
Can you just remind me what dollar amount they're trying to raise?
Their goal is 50,000, and they're at roughly 35 to 40. You know, any additional money is going to be helpful, because it won't have to come out of our operational funding, so...
Thank you.
Thanks.
And if I may just add real quick to that, I happened to attend the, the basket, I don't go to too many basket raffles, but I did go to that one, and it was well attended. But what a perfect venue to have any kind of an event like that, is the Regional Recreation Community Center. And I just want to reemphasize that to the community, that if they are looking to have events, and, you know, I know space is limited sometimes, but in time, that's a perfect venue to have something like that, so...
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Okay. Chief Lovett requested dispose of Engine Number Three. Come on up.
Engine Number Three? I don't know. I don't know. Everybody, I think about old Engine Three. Now, the Engine Three is the truck that, back in March of 2001, we found out had a cracked frame. We've had it over in storage at Earl's Truck Repair since then. We had hoped that the price of scrap would increase, at least enough to get us some revenue from it, from the sale. And unfortunately, the, the scrap price has not come in. So, a unique situation occurred, as you know, about a month and a half ago, I took it to Pennsylvania, and they did some repair work on it to get it back into operation. While we were there and talking about the future work that they'd be doing this spring on it, we talked about some of the safety features that we had always desired on the truck, like chains for the winter months. We were always under the impression that it never could be added to the truck. There was some additional lighting above and beyond the cost of the retrofit, and some storage bins, like where we put our Stokes Basket. So, those additional projects came in at about $15,000. So, as I'm talking to the gentleman about financing and the fact that we have a set amount of money that you folks have authorized to suspend, we're talking about our old truck, and that'll be framing broken. So, push come to shove, and talking about numbers and everything, LTC, the company that is doing our rebuild, has offered to extend to us a discount of $5,000 towards those retrofits if they can take and trade our old truck. Now, you folks that actually authorized me to scrap it, and talking to Matt, and driving the poor man crazy, but every, every five seconds, their lawyer's sending something back and forth, and it's kind of a little confusing. But the long story made short is, you're going to see the truck being taken out of the city. It won't be in a dumpster as scrap, but they've offered us $5,000, and they're going to convey it to the salesman that, that we work with on the truck, so...
Right.
He's going to have it, but just because we led you guys to believe that it was going to be scrapped, we just want to set the record straight, and it would be actually a trade against those retrofits on that truck.
So, point of origin, need a motion to approve that?
Yeah, we weren't sure exactly what the former motion was, so we thought just it'd be, make sense since the meeting was coming up, to have a fresh motion to basically just approve the disposal of the property.
So, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. Your motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the disposal of Engine Three, as stated by the fire chief.
Second. Your motion to dispose Engine Three has been seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next on the list, under Reports and Letters from Department Heads and Officials, we have Attorney Blumer, request for executive session related to a grievance, and we will move that to the end of our meeting. That's all right? All right, moving on, reports of standing committees. Alderman Talbot, Community Economic Development, Reimagine Depot Park, Better Places Grant, Vetting Application Process, Discussion of Community Recommendations.
All right, the Community and Economic Development Committee met on November 3rd, 2022. Committee's members present included myself, Alderman Franco, and Alderwoman Davis. Others present were President Dungus, Alderman Gillum, Alderman Barbie Gallo, Alderman DePoy, Mayor Laer, Superintendent Peters, Chief Lovett, Barbara Spalding, and Ed Clark from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority, and Arwin Turner from Come Alive Outside. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the reimagine Depot Park project undertaken by Come Alive Outside and their interest in partnering with the city on an application for a Better Places Grant. The goal is to raise $10,000 via crowdfunding, which would receive a $20,000 match for a total project budget of $30,000. Arwin Turner from Come Alive Outside explained that she began working with Kim Peters from the Recreation Department and Barbara Spalding from the RRA in March 2022 to explore a possible Better Places Grant for Depot Park. She emphasized the park's visibility and how reconfiguring the space could make it a more inclusive and welcoming space for social connection, health, and recreation. Come Alive Outside surveyed community members over a period of several months using multiple data collection methods. She shared several recommendations that would be within budget, have seen success in other communities, could reasonably be installed in Depot Park, and would be weather resistant. Key ideas included interactive art, increased lighting, and temporary or permanent seating. Kim Peters emphasized the need to change the culture around the park and believes the project fits nicely with other efforts being undertaken to improve community access around the Amtrak station. Alderman Franco stressed the importance of a cohesive branding strategy that would be consistent across this and other projects in the works for Center Street and Main Street Park. A motion was made to recommend to the full board that the city partner with Come Alive Outside on a Better Places Grant to reimagine Depot Park. Motion passed 3-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Alderman DePoy.
Quick update on the whole stage thing that we had talked about. Apparently, they really want a stage that would sit at one end of Main Street Park, so that the, so that the...
I was telling you, you're out of order, we're talking about another...
So that the sound can be projected out into the park.
Sure.
And in asking the Recreation Superintendent and, and Kim and Tyler, they said that that could be like a transformer, the stage comes down and into a box, and it gets towed around. It could be towed down to Depot Park and put there for the Friday Night Lives, or whatever else is going on down there, maybe even have some music as the outdoor farmer's market is going on, too. So, I think that that's something that would only add to the Depot Park reconfiguration in how we look at it. So, I think that some things are going to happen pretty nicely down at Depot Park, and thanks for going with that.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions, or comments? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The meeting adjourned at 5:50 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Talbot. All right. Alderman Whitcomb, you've already completed your ARPA funds review, so we'll move on to your Local Option Tax Assigning Revenue Discussion, Capital Improvement Fund Report.
Thank you, President Dungus. Finance Committee Meeting Number Two, October 27th, and as mentioned, it was on the Local Option Tax Assigning Revenue Discussion, as well as the Capital Improvement Fund. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. Committee Chair Whitcomb outlined the purpose of the meeting was to discuss and potentially determine how revenue received through the implementation of a local option tax would be assigned. Trezor Markowski shared that the implementation of a local option sales tax would generate approximately $1.2 million in annual revenue. Alderwoman Davis and Mayor Laer both offered caution related to being too specific in assigning the revenue received through the local option sales tax. Mayor Laer noted that the primary issues in need of being addressed seemed to be taxpayer relief, pension debt obligations, and capital improvement. The committee discussed that all revenue received would provide property tax relief, regardless of how it may be assigned, as it would offset the burden of property owners. Alderman DePoy inquired how much a taxpayer would save annually. 50% of the local option tax revenue was applied directly to taxpayer relief. Trezor Markowski stated that approximately $88 a year for a home assessed at $150,000 would be saved by the taxpayer. The committee discussed how a breakdown of 50% toward direct, direct taxpayer relief, 25 toward pension funding, and 25% toward capital improvement would impact taxpayers. Following that discussion, Alderman Talbot suggested he would rather see a large amount of the local option sales tax revenue applied toward capital improvement funding. Alderman Dungus shared his agreement with Alderman Talbot's proposal of applying more funding toward capital improvement. The committee discussed at length the advantages and disadvantages of being too specific in assigning percentages of revenue received from the implementation of a local option tax to specific municipal needs. The committee largely expressed consensus in wishing to have flexibility in assigning funds received on an annual basis through the local option sales tax. The committee discussed in order to adopt a local option sales tax, it would need to be done through a charter change and voted on by city residents. As such, a motion was made by Alderwoman Davis to refer charter ordinance to the discussion of placing a question on the March 2023 ballot to adopt a local option sales tax that would outline, and that they would outline the restriction of the use of funds. The motion passed 5-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, Alderwoman Davis made a motion to create a capital improvement fund that would be partially funded through a percentage of the local option sales tax. The motion passed 5-0. It's an ISO move.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Alderman Whitcomb.
Just to point out what I think is probably obvious to everybody, this obviously would be contingent upon a local option sales tax making it to the ballot, and then passing of getting voter approval, which is why we are saying partially funding a capital improvement fund.
Good. City Attorney.
Quick question. When you say percentage, do you mean you think it may be a fixed percentage, or just you mean a portion of the funds, like an undisclosed?
Do you be determined?
Yeah, so I guess, undetermined.
Okay.
But at least a percentage, if the voters were to approve the local option sales tax, at least a percentage of that would go toward partially funding what would be the established capital improvement fund.
And I'm asking more, so I guess for the potential meeting that's coming up to discuss the, the language that may go in. So, are you thinking that you will assign a percentage, or are you meaning that you just want to make it available, a portion of it, again, not a fixed portion, but just a portion, is available for this use, not like 25% goes to, you know, every year goes to capital improvement?
I, I'm speculating, just based on the discussion that we had, that when this arrives a charter and ordinance, we may come out with language that says, you know, a minimum amount of this from the local option sales tax would go toward capital improvement. So, it may get more specific then, that there would be a floor established.
Okay, yeah, because I was hoping that if I can draft something, or at least a few options for you before that meeting, it'll expedite, it'll expedite the timeline, I think, rather than if we just brainstorm at that meeting and then need to come back to kind of finalize a recommendation. So, whatever you can give me before then, if you're reading the tea leaves of, of the conversation, that would be helpful.
So, we have a motion to create a capital improvement fund that will be partially funded through a percentage of local option sales tax. Has been seconded. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do you want to read your last sentence?
The meeting adjourned at 6:50 PM.
Thank you. All right, Alderman Whitcomb, one more for you. Finance Committee Parking Garage Items Local Option Tax, pages 20 through 62 in your packet.
Last and certainly not least, to the Finance Committee marathon, was on November 1st, we met to discuss the Laz parking garage as well as warned the local option tax referral to charter ordinance. So just to point out the obvious, the discussion emerged in the previous finance meeting, the referral took place there, so we scratched that item from this agenda. So this meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The meeting opened with the committee chair noting what I just said, that we took up the item of the local option tax referral in the October 27th meeting. So then we moved to Attorney Blumer providing an overview to the committee regarding the proposed changes to the parking garage lease agreement. The agreement presented was largely consistent with previous agreements with alterations regarding maintenance and security services. Attorney Blumer then provided an overview of the parking garage management agreement. Attorney Blumer highlighted the agreement and highlighted that the agreement ensured that Laz would operate within the same terms outlined by the lease agreement. Alderman Davis inquired what parking contracts still remained with the garage. John outlined which agreements were in place. Members of the committee inquired if the Paramount maintains space within the parking garage, noting that current attendance at recent shows, which it was relayed, they currently do not have an agreement with a parking garage. Committee then reviewed the proposed Laz budget, which totaled a $10,757 positive operating margin. Alderman Davis inquired if there were any challenges related to the price of outside on-street parking related to the parking garage. It was noted that they are competitors in a sense, but that it was not abnormal for this to exist in municipalities. Mayor Laer and President Dunges spoke to ongoing changes to downtown parking, noted that there was ongoing discussion related to increasing on-street parking rates. A motion was then made to recommend the authorization of the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a lease with the state of Vermont for the downtown parking garage in substantially the form presented. The motion passed 4-0 and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Any comments, questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Then a motion to recommend the authorization of the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a parking garage management agreement with Laz Parking Limited LLC in substantially the form presented with amendments to the insurance and indemnification provisions to the satisfaction of the city's administration. The motion passed 4-0 and ISO move.
Second.
Our motion has been seconded. Any comments, questions or discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
So I did have a chance to go back and, well, it wasn't really a back and forth. I did send over the changes that I wanted to see in those particular areas and Laz agreed to those and that's the version that I provided you in the packet. So I would suggest just an amendment to the motion that was made in committee to strike the last portion, which says with amendments to the insurance and indemnification provisions to the satisfaction of the city's administration and just replace that with in tonight's packet so that it reads in substantially the form presented in tonight's packet. So it's the document that's in the packet that you're approving rather than the one that you saw.
I move to accept the motion. Accept and amend the motion as presented by the city attorney.
Okay, so I think because this came out of committee, we have to officially amend it and then vote on the amendment and then we can vote on the motion. So you're making the motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second on the motion to amend? Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. And then we have the motion on the floor with the amendment. Any further questions, comments or discussions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. All right, please continue, Alderman.
All right. Then a motion was made to recommend the approval of the fiscal year 2023 parking garage budget as presented. The motion passed 4-0 and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Any comments, questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
And the meeting adjourned at 6:36 PM.
Very much. Attorney Blumer, could you forward that amendment to the city so that he has a copy of it?
That'd be awesome. Forward it the old fashioned way.
There you go. Thank you very much. Okay. That is it for reports of standing committees, reports of select committees, we have none. Okay, petitions, letters and miscellaneous communication, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have none. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have none. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing and seeing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions and new business, I'll just bring up that we're going to warn the meeting for the Cannabis Control Commissioners to immediately follow the... Before. You want to do it before? So we'll do it just before, we'll get the date and time out, but we'll make sure that that happens on Wednesday, just before the taxpayer meeting. Okay? Is there any other new business to come before the board?
Mr. President, I just have a question. So the cannabis thing, would the sales tax apply to that? It would.
The option tax.
So do we have, have we even thought about as a city having any kind of alternative tax to cannabis or no?
I...
Do you mean like adding a tax to it?
A cannabis tax, I mean like Colorado makes...
I don't think we can, we already asked about that.
I think the state said, the state said no, I think they get it all.
Is that in the legis...
They get it all.
Alderman Barbara.
I thought in the discussion at the meeting, we said it would fall under the 1% sales tax that we added to the city.
Well, that was my initial question, yeah. I'm just wondering if there's anything else that we could do as a city just for cannabis?
You mean additional tax on top of that?
Yeah, I mean, the other states are absolutely making a killing from everything I've heard on it, so.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so the state is charging, I think, a pretty significant tax themselves and the recommendation was made by the Cannabis Control Board, well, the consultants that were presenting to the Cannabis Control Board, that they take a portion of that and disperse it to the local municipalities that are allowing retail establishments. And for the time being, they said, no, we'll give you a hundred dollar...
Tomorrow's election day.
I think it's a hundred dollar fee, we get a hundred dollars fee for the application, basically for everybody's time to process the application. But the larger tax is right now being held by the state and maybe at some point, because VLCT is lobbying that that money should be distributed more fairly because there will be, you know, more impacts to the localities of beyond a hundred dollars worth of time and effort going into...
But if I may, it was sold to the communities because we needed to put it to a vote, but there would be revenue that would be attached. You know, that was, that's the unfortunate piece.
All right, Clerk Heck and then Joe.
One more question on that.
Joe, hold on, let's...
I'm sorry, how about you go first and then you can go first.
Sure, okay, go ahead.
All right. Can they do, this has to be a walk-in sale only, right? They can't do mail sales?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
No, it's strictly walk-in and is the age 18 or 21? 21. Clerk Heck?
So Tom, just to your point, I was looking for ways to generate more revenue as far as that goes. The city has, the city shares, when it comes to liquor specifically, they allow us, the state does, first class license, $115 to the state and to the city. The second class liquor license is $70 or $75 to the state and to the city. A third class license is $1,095. We don't get a piece of that. Outside consumption stuff, we get 20 like they do. I don't think there's anything forbidding us to have the ability to license retail cannabis sales as a Rutland-specific license as far as that goes, which is something in the back of my head, based as you stay, and I'm not looking to be a money grabber, but if you're going to limit the amount of cannabis shops, which I think the board probably would, I don't think you want to see one on every street corner in downtown Rutland, what's stopping you from having a city license that may cost a thousand or $5,000 for a cannabis license, much less whatever it is you want to set? At this point in time, we're not seeing anything, even though the state's saying they're sending us a hundred bucks as far as that goes. And, you know, with the Department of Liquor Control, I'll be quite frank with you, you know, the clerks that issue licenses, I'm not talking about myself specifically, but I am including myself, do 10 times the amount of work that Department of Liquor and Lottery do. They push a button. We have to download that information, put a packet together, mail that packet out, receive that packet. I mean, everything's changed now with the online application, but I'm telling you right now, you're going to hear from your constituents, because this thing is going to be a horror show come the first of the year. I don't get notified now on request, I go in all the time looking, there's been no training, I requested training, it's just, it's how the state operates. So I think along the way that the city should look at licensing cannabis retail as its own entity, not relying on the state for anything. I think you have the wherewithal to do that. You sit as the Board of Control Commissioners, if you, or Cannabis Commissioners, if you wanted to instill a fee for that application for the city, I think you have the right to do so. It's just a matter of setting that hard number if you want.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to refer that issue to charter, to... Not that, we don't have a cannabis committee. To finance.
How about recreation?
It is a recreational.
Is that where you want it to go?
Uh...
Why, we're going to waste them?
I think charter, I think you want to...
I say charter, because we're still dealing with, still in committee.
We'd have to make an ordinance. Point of order, this, we can't do this anyway, so why are we having a meeting about it?
I could double check and then if we can, we could come back and refer it. But they're, they went to pains to sort of say like, you can't do anything except for these three things, you know, signage, zoning, nuisance and everything. They wanted to sort of stop all the end-arounds that any municipality could do to try to, you know, accomplish what we're talking about.
They get to keep it all.
That's my understanding, but I'll double check, I just think...
Can we finish with her comment?
Or you could refer it and then if it turns out, I could send you an email that says, I've confirmed that we can't do it and you could cancel it, either way.
Alderman Talbot, you want to do a quick follow-up and then I'll...
Yeah, I just, the original legal papers we got from the state said we couldn't do this. I agree, the state should be giving us money. The city should be getting the money if we're the ones that have the establishment and have to pay the police or whatever. If it's costing the city money, we should be getting money, but this is a state-level issue, this is not something that the city has control over based on the original guidance issued by the state. So I just don't see the point of scheduling a meeting when we're just going to find out from the city attorney that we can't do anything at that meeting. That's my only point.
So, I mean, I will draw the motion, but my point here is, is this, as you just mentioned, it's all of the financial burden is going to fall to the municipalities, namely Rutland, who we represent, if there are any kind of legal issues, if there's any kind of public safety issues, if there's anything that goes on with it, the first people called are us at the local level, not them at the state level. And they want to, I mean, they can take their cut because they, you know, supersede us in some ways, for some reason, I don't know why, but it just seems like the city is going to bear the brunt of anything that happens and we're going to, the taxpayers of the city are going to be paying for that.
Like the hotels.
Like the hotels, exactly. And we get a hundred bucks. Great, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So motion withdrawn, Alderman Gillum.
A question, do we have a business retail license in the city for certain businesses, don't we?
If you can eat it or drink it, we have a business license.
Okay, so why couldn't that fall under that?
Alderman Torrey.
My understanding is that you can do any of the normal licenses that you do for any other business, but you can't do a cannabis-specific fee. So if there was a retail establishment fee, we could establish that fee for that license. That's the same as all the other ones, so $25 or $50.
Or whatever, yeah.
So you could do that, is my understanding.
Yep.
I'd have to double check, I'd have to double check that too.
It was the idea that you could do anything regular. Regularly.
Here we go, it's the fourth time. Yeah, go ahead.
We have an executive session, so...
All right, go ahead.
No, it's fine, I'm just... You're done, you sure?
Well, I mean, you know, brownie tax.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, and then I'm going to get back to the new business list.
If I just make one suggestion, I know that the ELCT was really pushing that the local municipalities get a percentage of the tax. So if the mayor would be willing to check in on whether they've given up that ghost or whether they've, they're going to try again this legislative session to make a change, that could be hopefully not too much for him to do when he's asking questions.
Okay. All right, is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions or new business to come before the board? Alderman Torrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. In March of '21, when I had to vacate my seat, I reached out, I spoke to the board about the issue of homelessness and the problems that were, I was seeing on the horizon based on some of the work that I was doing with Alderman Gillum, with our family homeless shelter. As you know, that has become a huge problem. Tonight, I want to bring up our youth and what's happening in our schools and in our community. I have a child in the high school, I have a child in the middle school and my wife now works in the intermediate school. We're really close to what's happening in the schools. Our children are suffering, the trauma from not only the pandemic, the recent, you know, the recent trauma from the pandemic, but all of the other issues that we have in our community of generational poverty, of drug use, of addiction, these are so dramatically impacting our youth. And some of you may say, well, that is them, those are those kids.
No, they're our kids.
Our kids are being affected. They're all our kids, all of them are our community members. But when you have kids who are in the school system and leave the class and create chaos and the other class has to move because of what's happening in that classroom with that kid, as the teachers and the administration follow policy and watch and help the kid unwind, the impact on our other kids is so dramatic and so tragic. This is not our school system's problem. You all have, many of you have, know people on the school board and are hearing things from that direction. This is not a school board problem, this is not a school problem, this is a community problem. The school system has started their Portrait of a Graduate project? Great, absolutely, what do we want to see in our graduates? What do we want to see of the people who go through our school systems? It's so incredibly important, but it cannot be done by them alone, it needs to be done by the community. We need to take ownership of this and work with the school systems. We try to recruit people, if we're bringing people into the schools, some of the experiences that people are having, as you know, are causing them to move out of the city, move into Mendon or Rutland Town. It is a real problem for us. And by the way, Mendon and Rutland Town, they come to our high school. Those issues do not just, all of a sudden disappear at the high school level. In fact, they get worse. Our children need us desperately. My children need me. For the past eight years, I've come to this board and have sat at evening meetings. Two or three nights a week, I've been giving my time to the city and to you all. My children need me. And so tonight, I'm resigning from the Board of Alderman. I've had a good run, I've enjoyed my time here. But when I talk to my kids about prioritization and what matters, my commitments to my family, my commitments to my children are what matter. I will not stop working for the city, but I need to change my priorities right now and I need to prioritize my children. I need to be home for dinner, I need to be home talking with them and I need to be home helping them make, get through this as they move from 12 and 14 to 16 and 18 to 20 and 22. We need our community to get behind our children and I'm asking all of you to figure this out with me. So with that, Mr. President, my resignation from the Board of Alderman. Thank you very much, I've enjoyed my time.
Chris, it's a really tough decision when you have to choose between your passions in life, but when it's family, it makes it a lot easier because, at least for myself and obviously for yourself and I'm sure for everybody else in this room, family does come first. You hear that a lot, you hear families first, and this is a direct reflection of that. I'm sorry to see you step away, I'm sure everybody here is, but I think that you're doing the right thing for your family personally and I appreciate that decision, so.
Here, here.
Good luck. I don't know if you need anything.
Mr. President, I...
Alderman Gillum.
I hope, I hope my brethren over there does not disappear completely from the homeless and the youth protections, or youth project that we served on. I hope he sticks with it and I'll definitely support him if he does.
Any other, yep.
Mr. President, it comes as a shock to me tonight to hear that from Alderman Torrey, not the part about his family and the troubles that his youth, his family is going through in the school system. I've had, now my third is a senior at Rutland High School and hasn't gone through quite the trials of Alderman Torrey's kids apparently, but, you know, there's, there have been problems, there has been peer problems that I know about firsthand. And a lot of those kids come to my house and they hang out at my house and they are all good kids. And at times, like us as adults, kids make bad decisions and it's our duty... And it's our duty, and I applaud you on putting your family first to take care of those problems. You know, Alderman Torrey and I, over the years, we like to banter back and forth, and I think we agree on a great many things more than we disagree on. And I'd be very sorry to see him off this board, and I hope that once your family, your kids have gone through high school and off to college and are making a positive improvement in this world, that, you know, we see you back here at some point in some capacity, because I think that the city loses quite a bit of institutional knowledge and quite a bit of hard working out of Alderman Torrey, but I know, as Alderman Gillum said, he will still be around as he can be, and I look forward to working with him in the future.
Any other comments? Okay. Alderman Whitcomb, there.
Thank you, President Dungus. First and foremost, I got to thank Alderman Torrey for really speaking to what is probably the most critical crisis facing the community. I think we hate to acknowledge it, but we really don't have a prayer moving forward if we can't fix what's happening with our youth and our school systems, you know, if we can't show up and be there. I just, I commend his courage for the statement, I will deeply miss him, you know, as a colleague on this board. I never would have run for this position if it wasn't for Chris. There's no way the residents of this city could ever adequately thank you nor repay you for the commitment you've demonstrated to them. Thank you so much, you will be so deeply missed.
Any other questions or comments for Chris? All right. Chris, we are all here, if you have still ideas and concepts, we want to hear them from you, just as we do any other citizen, but thank you for your time on the board, and take care of your family, appreciate it. And with that, we will get the motions to move into executive session.
You're a bit anticlimactic, I think, tonight, but here we go. Motion to find that a premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a grievance settlement would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the settlement provisions to be negotiated.
So moved. Second.
Our motion has been seconded. Any comments, questions, discussions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, clerk, and city attorney to discuss the negotiation of a grievance settlement as allowed under Title I, Section 313.
So moved.
Second. Our motion's been seconded. Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break, and then move into executive session.